Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Portsmouth City Council meeting for Monday, September 14, 2009, here in the Irene Dondaro Foley City Council chambers. At this time, I would like to ask the... What is your official title these days?
Deputy City Clerk.
Deputy City Clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blalock.
Here.
Counselor Noveline Clayberg.
Here.
Counselor Dwyer.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Spear.
Here.
Counselor Higmanet.
Here.
Counselor Panalakis.
Yeah.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to ask if Counsel Panalakis would lead us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We repeat after me. I repeat the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under one God, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, there are two Mayors Awards that we are presenting this evening. The first is to the Harbor Church, and I understand Seth Hoffman is here from the Harbor Church, who I've just met, and will have him come forward in a moment. But the Mayor's Award is offered with sincere gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding volunteer work that was performed by Seth Hoffman and the Harbor Church group in painting the foyer and lobby at the Connie Bean Center, lawn care at Goodwin Park, and the cleanup of Pierce Island in our city. I'd like to ask you to come forward, and we have a gift for you in this award. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few words, please address us at the podium. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say that it was great to be a part of this event, and Harbor Church organized it, but it was great to see the whole community come out. It wasn't really just community service, it was community renewal, where we invited our friends to really pitch in for the city that they love, so it was great to be a part of it. And I want to thank you too for the public works and their efforts in helping me coordinate it, so it's excellent. Thank you.
Thanks again to the Harbor Church, and thank you, Seth. Now, we'll move on to our next Mayor's Award, and this is for Cornerstone Tree Care. And is Mykam Davis present? There he is. I remember him, but he was up in a bucket when I saw him. This is with sincere gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding volunteer work that was performed by Mykam Davis and his employees in trimming the trees at the South Playground and at the corner of South Street and Junkins Avenue in our city. And if you'd come forward, Mykam. If you want to say a few words about the work you engaged in, that'd be great.
Thank you very much for this recognition, I appreciate it. Arbor Day was a lot of fun, we had six tree care companies out there, working in Haven Park, Sun Tree, Northeast Shade Tree, True North Tree Preservation and Land Care, the Organic Arborist, Seacoast Tree Care, I think that's all of us. And it was a great day, it was good to get to know our fellow arborists a bit in a day of community service, and yeah, it was great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you for your hard work. I should say this, that at one point, I think it was Mykam said, "Do you want to go up in the bucket?" And I started to, even though I really was afraid, and John Bohenko said, "I can't do it." So, thank you very much for your hard work. Next, we have, as we indicated we would in the fall, have presentations from some boards and commissions, quarterly reports. In the first instance, I'd like to recognize Richard Smith and Steve Marison from the Pierce Island Committee, whoever's going to come forward, and have a report on the Pierce Island Committee. And welcome.
Good evening, Steve Marison, 38 Pickering Street, co-chair for Pierce Island.
Richard Smith, 93 High Street, Portsmouth, co-chair.
As you know, we lost our chairman the first of the year, and Richard and I initiated getting the committee back together, and we've gone along... Do you all have copies of the report? We initiated some work on the island with the help of the CINDY and various factions of the city administration, and also with help from our member Counselor Kennedy, who's been a great help to the committee. And just to let you know, throughout this summer, the railing, I don't know if you know, the railing on the bridge is going to be replaced, it's gone out to bid, and we've also worked with Nancy Karma on taking the signage that's out there, consolidating what can legally be consolidated, and eliminating the many, many signs that are out there, still staying within, you know, the legal limits that, you know, the police and the DPW have asked us to do. And a final report's coming in October 5th, and hopefully we'll have some new signs, including a new welcome sign out there next spring. And they'll be very park-looking, sort of like the fishing pier sign, so that the whole island, all the signers will look more like a state or national park. And then, every year, I don't know if you know it, but we put down, at the same time with Blue Ocean, we have a volunteer group, we get as many volunteers as we can to pick up the island, things left over from the winter, and then we keep an eye on it all year long, all the members, and report to DPW whenever there's, or the police whenever there's issues. I mean, we try to be very active on the island, sort of like the overseers, caretakers, I don't know what you want to call it. But we've also, this year, for the first time, we've had a springtime site walk with the various department heads of the city, pointing out what we saw the year before, improvements we thought might be accomplished in the coming year. That was really good this year, and it's led to some of the work, and you know about the carry-in, carry-out, that didn't seem to work very well, so we've brought the four barrels back, and it's been very good this year, and everyone's helped out. Many volunteer groups, including the Harbor Place people, the Harbor people. They're in church. They are out there, of course, you know, and that's very helpful during the year to just give volunteer groups to just help, and also get to meet people, too. The city has started mowing what we call the eastern loop more, and we've just had a site walk, it wasn't in the meeting, it was right after, so it's not in the minutes. And what we're trying to do is go back to the master plan and complete two of the three remaining trails that are on the master plan, and we're just starting, you know, initial talks on that. The site walk included Cindy, EPA Peter, and Steve Parkinson was out there. So, we've changed a little because of the EPA laws, if you see the master plan, we started sticking more with the natural contours of the island, and preserving as much of the vegetation that is natural while getting rid of invasive plants that are killing the trees out there. We've also initially talked about possibly replacing a lot of the trees, we lost a lot in the ice storm, and we're also losing them to invasive plants, the vines that are choking them out. But hopefully next year, we're going to try to get a group together and get the vines out, since everyone seems to be in agreement that we can definitely do that. So this is down the road, but this is the work that the committee has done so far this year.
Well, thank you very much, Steve and Richard. If any councils want to ask any questions or make any comments, please, Counsel Kennedy.
I just want to say the Pierce Island Committee's been doing a great job, they did a cleanup, which I went over and partaged, and they had gotten an early start, so I only got a couple shovel-loads of moving stuff. They did a great job there. The other thing is, is we had a birthday party last summer for Pierce Island and Mr. Whitehouse, our Lusker historian, did a really nice job pulling pictures together and letting people see, and we had ice cream from the city. And the last thing also, we had the dogs out on Pierce Island, and it was a good experience than a negative, and they did a nice job there.
Noted for the record.
So thank you, everyone, for doing such a great job.
Counsel Spear, then Counselor Noveline Clayberg.
Did you have an intern with the city today, and was that a successful experience?
Being the ranger?
The ranger, yeah.
There was a ranger out there early in the year when there was a lot of traffic, Russ had him out there, but the committee has basically handled patrolling the island. Most of the members, I'm sure you've seen the new list, we're also trying to get three new members, and we try to pick members that are on the island at various times of the day, for whatever reason, to go to the different areas of the island and keep an eye on it. And it seems to work better, because the ranger, Russ seems to need him more down to Spinnaker Point, so it ties up a lot of his time.
Counselor Noveline Clayberg.
Did many people take advantage of the overnight parking for the boat, boat use?
Well, I have seen a few.
Yeah, not too many people have stayed overnight on the island. Once in a while, some, you might see the police out there, they may have found somebody camping out overnight that shouldn't have been, but there's not too many vehicles, and there's not too many boats.
Yeah, but the overnight, you know, the boat launch.
Yeah, and at the boat launch, there's not too many people. But it's amazing, though, how many more people are actually using the island. I'd say in the last year, the numbers of people that are coming to the island, you'd all be proud. It's absolutely fantastic, and like this coming weekend's Ferry House tour, there's a lot going on this weekend, so there'll be a lot of people in town, but it's just a beautiful place, and thank you for your support.
Thank you for your hard work. I'm sure, Counsel, we have a few more councils, I'm sorry, Counsel Dwyer.
Has the committee had a chance to give, discuss, and give input into the recreation plan, the, or the recreation assessment study that's going on?
No. Would you like us to be more involved in that?
Well, I know that a number of, and I don't even know if there's another opportunity, but I think that's still an open opportunity for citizens and committee members to have input into the whole overall recreation study. It might be something you'd be interested in doing, is...
Sure, I mean, it's going to affect the island as far as, you know, new facilities and what have you, that's fine.
Exactly, and one of our goals...
We do talk to Russ.
Right, one of our goals in trying to get the committees to kind of report in the same arena is to make sure that you have input into the activities of the others.
Okay.
And to that end, Carl Deemer will be up after Steve Miller from the Conservation Commission, so if you want to stick around a few minutes, you'll hear Counsel Smith and Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your work you've been doing out there, the island does look great, the paths look great. The, I'm really happy to hear that you're going to be replacing some of those trees we lost in the ice storm. I was out there recently, I had noticed at one of the outlook points towards the northeast corner, right down, as you take the path to go up, that a lot of the topsoil and grass is gone.
Yes, we pointed that out, and we're going to have to do something with new base material, which is going to be part of the EPA stipulations about the materials that go on the trail, and Everett and Steve Parkinson are aware that we have some problems.
What has been causing all the, all the grass to go and all that topsoil to be?
It's just been downpours. It's just natural drainage, and it's just hitting the areas and just washing it right out.
Right, washing it right out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'm glad to hear you're going to get it fixed.
We are, it's not going to be overnight, but it's something we're working on.
Thank you. Thank you. Assistant Mayor Blalock.
Yeah, just a comment, I just really wanted to thank the committee. I regularly use Pierce Island, it's on my bicycle route, I'm there almost every morning, and you're right, people are using it early, middle of the day, late in the day, I mean, it's just, it's something that citizens of Portsmouth can be very proud of, and it's very useful, and it's, you know, the dog statues were pretty cool to look at, and it's just, it's a really neat area, and it looks great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, we'll see you again soon as we go through the quarterly reporting, but I think it's a good process, and thanks for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Steve Miller from the Conservation Commission.
Counselors, council, and city staff, thank you for this opportunity, Steve Miller, Chair Conservation Commission. When I called Joanne for further guidance about tonight, I promised her I would shorten my 60-minute talk to five, so I will try to stick to that. As you know, the Conservation Commission meets the second Wednesday of every month to fulfill its role of advising the planning board on conditional use permits and state wetland applications. The CC is the only local board specifically charged with protecting natural resources, and it provides a focal point within municipal government for environmental concerns. So one of our roles, of course, is to make sure other boards consider natural resources when they carry out their duties, and so this is a nice function of this, and we appreciate that opportunity, and look forward to doing that more. Currently, the Conservation Commission is a little shorthanded, we have six current members with three, we have three resignations in the past six months, and so we are looking for one voting member, and two alternate positions are open. We hope that we can fill those soon. Now, the Conservation Commission is involved in a lot of different projects concerning natural resources, and I'll only discuss a few tonight that are probably the most relevant at this time, and one of them is the prime wetland designation here in Portsmouth. We have completed all the requirements for that, except going through the city council readings, so we look forward to completing that process soon. That's a very important piece that we've been, had spent a lot of time on, and of course, it took a little while to complete some of those final stages which have been done. The other main project that I want to report on tonight is the, what we call the PULA, a terrible name, it's the Public Undeveloped Lands Assessment, that's the best we could come up with. As you know, there was an RFP put out for that assessment, we used conservation funds to pay for it, and I think we're about midway through the assessment, and I'm hoping that we can complete that by this winter. That assessment is a, it's a very comprehensive assessment that I think will really be valuable for not only the Conservation Commission, but city council, the REC, the REC Board, and the other boards as well, we hope. What we are doing is, we are looking at all publicly-owned undeveloped land, so we went through all the parcels of land that the city owns, we screened those and cut that down to, it was almost 100 parcels still, but we cut out all recreation fields, ball fields, playgrounds, and those types of things, and we are charged, we charged our consultant to basically do a really good ecological assessment, conservation assessment of those lands, and there's many different parts to that, but there's only a couple that I'll describe tonight. There are things in there in terms of looking at invasive species, which was already mentioned out of Pierce Island, so we're looking at other parcels, looking for, at the extent of the invasive species that we have on these parcels, it's a huge problem everywhere, and it's one that we're grappling with here as well. We're also looking at conservation values of those properties, some of the properties, of course, will be more valuable in terms of species diversity or other conservation values that we, we want to make sure the city maintains within the city boundaries. We're also looking at water quality and other natural resource protection aspects, so we're really looking forward to that assessment, which will, again, help not only the Conservation Commission, but the other boards and commissions as well, we hope. Now, one of the things that's come out of that, and the Conservation Commission has been discussing it, we don't have the answer, but out of this assessment, we hope to come up with a good, comprehensive kind of management strategies for certain parcels in the, in the city, in terms of really taking advantage of the strengths that they have, the values that they have. And we know that down the line, and even now, we have this problem, but we really, we need to develop a stewardship corps, we need a volunteer-based citizen involvement with taking care of our public lands. Of course, it's very complicated, there are some issues like with invasive species that you need professionals involved with the different types of applications to control, but you also need a good, strong corps of stewardship, stewardship folks, to get out on our properties, help maintain them, help keep an eye on them, and just help the city manage its property. So, we're trying to grapple with that now, we're not sure how to actually pull that about, but we're hoping that, well, we know that we won't be able to hire a corps, so we know that it'll be a volunteer corps, and I think that we have the citizens in Portsmouth, and I think we have the resources in town to tackle this, but we just need to put our thinking hats together and really make it happen. Because it's been mentioned about Pierce Island, we look forward to working with them, I'm a former Pierce Island Committee member, look forward to working more with them in the future with invasive species in control, there's some great state resources that maybe we can bring to bear, and also working with them on perhaps some buffer protections and water quality issues and that type of thing. Pierce Island's a key property right in the river, of course, and we would look to help improve the buffers out there for water quality issues. I just want to mention the REC Board, and when the PULA study is done, we will share that with them, we think it'll have valuable information for them as they go forward, looking at recreational fields, there may be lands that are in the conservation role, so to speak, that might be good for REC fields, but we want to look at that assessment first, but we certainly will work with them and talk with them about what we find and move forward there. And I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but shy of that.
Questions for Steve, Counsel Dwyer.
I'm really glad to hear you bring up the stewardship, because of course, that was with people contacting us about their interest in being stewards of particular properties.
Yes.
That was one of the prompts for doing the survey, and... That was one of the prompts for doing the survey, and I think that Pierce Island folks have a lot to contribute to, how to think about the stewardship. Again, which is one of the reasons why we really hope that you guys would work together. That also strikes me as potentially, when the report is done and the time is right, a public meeting like we've done for some other areas where that's explained, like wastewater 101, and gives you the opportunity to get more people involved in the stewardship. I think there's that level of interest from people in the community in that work, so that would be great to look forward to.
In fact, I think that's already in the RFP, and it's one of the, one of the duties of the consultant who was hired to do the work. There are several meetings in that budget to meet with the Conservation Commission, but also we discussed public meetings towards the end of the process, so we'll look forward to making that happen.
Council Dwyer.
Just a second question, which is related to the first, the wetland designation. Where are we with vernal pool designation?
Well, we've worked closely with the planning board on the city ordinances and the rewrites, and we currently have in the draft ordinances that are moving forward through the city process, vernal pool protection with the buffer. Now, we, the Conservation Commission had a lot of lengthy discussions about the size of that buffer. Currently, our freshwater wetland buffer is 100 feet, and we are looking to strengthen that in terms of, we call it a buffer, it's actually a setback. Buffer, from a conservation standpoint, really means water quality function, so we've strengthened the buffer regulations or ordinances in the draft ordinances, looking to strengthen the buffer ordinances in terms of water quality function, but we've also put in vernal pools with the same buffer, 100-foot buffer around the vernal pools. And that was, that was, that was a tough compromise on the part of this Conservation Commission through our discussions. We really tried to balance the landowner rights and also water quality protections and trying to protect those vernal pools because they're such an important wildlife area. And it was, it was a, you know, it was a tough decision, but, but those are in the draft ordinances now, and we hope to see those go forward.
Council Dwyer, you've finished, and then I'll.
Yeah, just one related to that. Has the state moved anywhere on vernal pool protection?
I honestly don't know. I don't think they have. I think there's been a lot of discussion, but I honestly don't know if there's any ordinances or regulations in the works. I think there's a lot of voluntary, there's a lot of good information, but I'll have to look at that specifically to, I don't know.
Council Spear, then Council Kennedy.
Thank you. When I'm thinking, the vernal pool question actually made me think of this, the very little knowledge that I have about it, some of the, when you're looking for a lot of the wetlands, it's water quality is the important issue, but with the vernal pools, you also have amphibians who spend part of their time in the water, part of their time outside the water, which is why you need that setback. And I have read that they need more than 100 feet to have that. So let me ask you a question, then. With that in mind.
Yes.
When we've been doing the zoning rewrite with the planning board, how involved has the Conservation Commission been in that process, number one? And number two, has the commission been satisfied with the end result in terms of its policy initiatives and where it wants to be in terms of, you know, where the city should be in terms of these ecological issues?
Good question, tough to answer. Although, first the vernal pools, I think the CC would love to see a 300-foot buffer around vernal pools. If we were a municipality upstate with a lot of forested lands and not as heavily developed as we are here in Portsmouth, that might be a practical reality. But we honestly, really, we had many discussions about where to go with that and the size of that buffer, and it, on one hand, it made perfect sense to make it consistent with the other regulations with freshwater wetlands, knowing that it would fall short on actual ecological function for that buffer around vernal pools. And it was a tough decision. We would love to see 250, 300 feet, which most of the science tells this is what you need to protect those wildlife species. If we honestly thought we could get that through, I think we would have asked for it, but I'm, I hope that I'm wrong. I mean, I would love to see it improved. In terms of the ordinances and the changes that are in there, we worked very closely with the planning board, we had many meetings with them, joint meetings with them. I think the overall sense is very positive about the changes. I think the city's been doing a phenomenal job overall with stormwater issues, the whole sewer system issues, the infrastructure work that's been going on. My personal feeling is that the city's been doing a great job with those things under very difficult circumstances, but we were very much involved with the planning board, looking at the ordinances. We've learned many lessons in the last couple of years, some hard lessons, and I think the changes that are necessary are incorporated in the, in the ordinances, in the draft. So, I mean, you could always strengthen some things, but I think, I think overall we did a really good job of addressing the needs of the city and balancing that with the needs of the citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Kennedy.
Well, Eric kind of asked my question, but I also had another little question. The Sustainability Committee, well, actually a statement. Sustainability Committee does a very nice job with the Sustainable Fair and all that stuff, and they really get it and have a lot of volunteers, and so that might be another committee you might want to talk to and get some people that would support you.
Great. One of the challenges with the stewardship component is it needs a large kind of organizational feel or structure to it as the Sustainability Fair, and they've done an excellent job with that, and a great crew of people involved. So you need a similar kind of administrative structure, and then you need a pretty large core of people that are able to get out there and pull weeds and pick up trash and do all the necessary things, but we'll, we'll keep that in mind and look to that as a model.
I just kind of ask one question myself regarding the stewardship matter. You know, thinking about both of the models that Councilors Kennedy and Dwyer talked about, and then looking at Pierce Island and looking at Sustainability Committee, it seems to me that there's an awful lot of land that you're talking about. So, you know, I don't know is part of the RFP and part of the report is going to include any recommendation as to structure for stewardship, but we have to put our organizational hats on at some point if we're going to go there, so I don't, I don't know if it's within or without. If it's within, at least talking points or an idea, ideas in that regard, you know, going to be helpful, because I suspect it's going to be bigger than the other two even, if you really think about it, in terms of the amount of people that will need to work out there.
Yes, it's not, it's not currently part of the RFP and the work that's being done. It was, it's probably outside the professional strengths of the consultants that we hired, but, but as I mentioned, the Conservation Commission, we've talked about it several times, and perhaps there's a, maybe we need to look forward to a meeting and, or, you know, my body, my tongue saying, let's schedule a meeting.
Oh, that's okay.
But maybe we, maybe we didn't need to do that to really kind of strategize about how to deal with the stewardship component, because it's a very important piece, and the city's got some great properties out there, and, and we want, we want the citizens to be able to utilize them while at the same time protecting the natural resources that are the core of those lands.
Okay, thanks very much. Thank you very much for your hard work, and we have another report from Carl Deemer from the Recreation Board, the chair.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, Deputy City Manager Hayden and City Attorney Sullivan. Thank you very much for allowing the opportunity to come here and provide you with a quarterly report tonight. I know that I welcome this opportunity. Each year, I know all of you also go through painstaking effort of trying to put the budget together, and sometimes may not see the fruits of your labor as much as you'd like to. I just wanted to be here to share some facts and information with you so that you can see what happens on the other end of that money. The, and not only that, I just want to say that we're blessed to have Russ Wilson as a Recreation Director, has done a fantastic job this past year, as also the Athletic Director, and his staff, his professional staff of great individuals. But just to start off with, going through this past summer, I know it was, they had a very, very successful summer, even though June and July were very, very wet kind of months, and the weather was not very cooperative with a lot of the programs. And if you don't mind, I'll read from a couple of notes, just to keep all the numbers correct, because I can't believe how many people we impact with the programs that we have. The outdoor pool had over 24,000 people attend, open swims in the afternoons and the weekends. We also gave free swim lessons to over 600 residents, resident children, children in the mornings. We also have started new evening program of swim lessons, which was extremely successful as well. During the day, during the summer, over 400 children attended our summer day camp program, as well as over 1,000 children attended all of our summer camps and classes that included the new camps and programs like pottery camp, creative puppet camp, Lego robotics camp, theater camp and surf camp. New sport leagues were also added this year, including a summer middle basketball league and a women's basketball league, to go with dozens of other summer programs that are offered. So not only those I mentioned, but we offer, we also co-sponsor a lot of other leagues that, that participate in the athletics in the, in the city. All of our adult programs went off without a hitch, even in spite of the weather situations that we had. It was a very successful summer. So this past quarter, we're looking forward to a nice fall with the programs that are made available coming up, and we appreciate your support on this. I also want to just bring you up to date on the Recreation Needs Assessment and Study that is performed by the Architectural Team, the acronym, we call them TAT, T-A-T, along with David Moore from the Community Development Department and the Recreation Director, Russ Wilson, have, over the summer, have met with dozens of recreational facility and field stakeholders, people that utilize the fields, utilize the buildings, and looking at who's involved and what their uses are, and trying to assess the number of people that use it too. So collectively putting all this information together. They also met with officials from our surrounding towns and sport league presidents, nonprofit and profit recreational facilities and organizations, and numerous other interested stakeholders. The Recreation Department has supplied TAT with a tremendous amount of raw data statistics, as well as field and facility usage from both city and school perspective. This information is also being assessed by TAT of all the open spaces and parks and available fields and things like that, to provide us a very comprehensive report at the end of the year. The Recreation Board and TAT met recently with the school board, also to get their input for the recreational needs study, and received very valuable information from the school board. It was a very good meeting, I enjoyed it, and it was great to get their input on what their needs are, to help support their programs as well. After initial citywide meeting back in June, over 100 participants had showed up at the meeting, and we got some very good input from a lot of great people out there. We also received 70 email suggestions and concerns from dozens of stakeholders and citizens and everybody that was involved, so we're taking and collecting all this data as we get it. There's also, you know, information from city officials, all the people involved in city management as far as the fields and open spaces, getting their input, and, because they will have a lot of valuable information for us. The, the whole program, I think, as far as where the assessment has gone, has been extremely thorough, but it's also exhaustive, trying to get as much information as possible. I know previous members have just brought up Pierce Island, and I know that all these open spaces are being looked at, anything to do with any recreational, any open spaces that has any viability of being looked at or considered for future use or non-use is being considered, so I know those things are being done. There are still several meetings to go. As Council Dwyer mentioned earlier, we're definitely going to have some additional meetings come in the fall here that will warrant public input, moral information, as much as we can get. Also, there's a website, on the website, you can email directly any suggestions. If you can't make one of those meetings, certainly go to the city website, and there's a link right there to link right into the needs study, so your information will be processed and considered. We also believe we're still on the original, timetable's still on track with a full report to the city and to the city council by the end of the year, is what we're looking for. The recent bonding of the middle school project will also allow a new field, new softball field to be built, as well as to replace the alumni field, and then also the artificial turfing on the football field at Portsmouth High School. One thing that we want to ask is that when the JBC is formed, that those two projects be given, you know, a high priority, because they are not additional fields, they're replacement fields, so whatever can be done to prioritize those particular projects would be greatly appreciated, as we can get those in use as soon as possible. And this way here, the students and players and all participants will have a place to play before construction, you know, begins at the alumni field, so we can transition the folks a lot easier. The Recreation Board would like to thank the city council, you know, for its support of the Recreation Department, and all the consideration you give us. Sometimes I know that, you know, you just, you know, there's a great impact out there that you see those smiling faces running around, kicking soccer balls around out there in the, in the fall, and the great projects we have, we provide the citizens of Portsmouth day in, day out. And whether you're privileged or not privileged, you can participate, and that's the great thing about it. So it brings a lot of good joy to all of our citizens.
Thank you, Carl. Questions or comments for Carl? Council Dwyer.
This may be a question for Carl or for Cindy, and that is whether the timing is such that any of the outcomes will be able to be included in this year's CIP. I don't know if that's, is that something you all have talked about?
Yes, I think that what they're trying to target is definitely by the end of the year, so that, you know, the information can be shared and disseminated to, you know, proper people.
And so that if there are some things that might be a cost item even for the upcoming year, there is that potential that it might be in there?
I think that was the original intent, is to try to get that done by the year-end, and try to get a report. I know as we go along, we think up new and new ideas, so we collect more and more data and things to consider, so it's been an interesting project.
Council Kennedy.
Once this report is formed, where it's coming kind of at the end of the year, around the holidays, is there any plan to roll it out for the public besides the council here, so public can hear it and that kind of thing? Do you know?
I think the, there's definitely a public input sessions that are slated and planned. As far as a final presentation, I know that those things will be considered with David Moore, who works with the Community Development and also the city manager, and I'm sure that if that would be a very good thing for the public to hear, to be able to go for a presentation, I'm sure it's something we can accommodate him with, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for your hard work. Thank everyone on the committee and all the people who are involved, and the many people in the community who are stakeholders and participants.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, Carl. Okay, we next move on to acceptance of the minutes, and there are none for this session. We move to public comment, and there is no one here to speak in public comment. So we move to approval of grants and donations, the first being acceptance of a donation from Eleanor Frank to the Portsmouth Fire Department in the amount of $50. We have a motion.
So move.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous. The second is a request to apply for and accept a $10,000 grant from the National Association of County and Health, County and City Health Officials, the NACCHO, and the motion would be to authorize the city manager to apply for, accept and expend a $10,000 grant from Nacho.
Some of.
I'm going to say Nachos.
Second.
Okay, we have motion duly seconded, discussion. Hearing none.
I just.
Council Penalakis.
Is, could the deputy city manager tell me if there's any match in funds to that?
No match required.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And so, we're ready to further discussion, seeing none, no one rising. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Item eight, consideration of resolutions and ordinances. The first is first reading of ordinance, amending Chapter seven, Article two, Taxi Cabs, Section 7.210, permits and inspections required by the addition of Item C. Each taxi permitted in the city shall be inspected in the month of June each year for compliance with the requirements in this ordinance. So the motion would be to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading on the ordinance at the October 5 city council meeting.
Some of.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Item B, first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter seven, Article three, Section 7.330, no parking, Washington Street, both sides, from Hancock Street to Howard Street. Motion would be to move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing at the second reading of the proposed ordinance as submitted at the October 5 city council meeting. So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion duly seconded, discussion. Council Kennedy.
I will not be supporting this. I was told the other day, and I haven't had a chance to investigate, that when Washington Street was designed and upgraded, that they were told that the parking would stay as-is. Street was designed and upgraded, that they were told that the parking would stay as is. And I do not have any backup for that, because I've yet to talk to the city about that comment. But we do not need to lose any more parking in that end. Every time we lose a spot, it moves it more into the south end, and we need to stop giving up parking spots in general, I feel. I know we were told there were 19 spots given up in the last seven years. I kind of question that figure, so I'm also going to ask that the city give us where those 19 spots were. And so I will not be voting for this.
Thank you, Council Kennedy. Council Spear?
A question for the deputy city manager. Looking at the highlighted text, looks like, if I'm reading it correctly, we're removing parking from one side of the street. Currently, there is parking on one side of the street, and it has a crossout and then a bowl, so is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Well, I think if you turn to the next page, which is your-
Has the two red lines.
Highlighted red, that's probably, yeah.
That's what it's going to be. I guess my question is what it is now. Is it parking on one side right now?
I believe-
Correct.
-there is one side now.
Thank you.
Council Smith confirms.
And with that in mind, I'm also feeling that I don't like the change in the ordinance, but I'm willing to listen to Councilor Smith.
Council Smith?
Thank you. I'm going to be voting in favor of this, because I think it's important, regardless of how you feel about it, that we always allow the citizens to be able to speak for it. I think we should always be able to have a pass first reading, be able to hold the public comment, and be able to get input from the citizens. And so with that, I think it's important that we stand united and allow the citizens to speak in favor of this.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Okay, one opposed.
I'll be opposed too.
Two opposed, councilors Kennedy and Spear. Motion moves on to be for the public hearing and second reading. Item C, first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 5, International Fire Code, Chapter 12, Part 1, International Building Code, and Part 2, International Residential Code, Chapter 15, Part 1, International Plumbing Code, and Part 2, International Mechanical Code. The motion would be to pass first reading of the proposed amendments to the codes I just mentioned, and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the October 5 meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second discussion? Council Dwyer?
Just a minor technical point. The ordinance that we have as a number isn't really a sentence. It's like the start of the sentence, but it needs, it feels like it needs a statement.
Well, of course, the way this ordinance is going to work, it's going to adopt national codes.
Well, that's what I think it should say. I mean, it doesn't say that. It would, it just lists them. It doesn't actually say that we're adopting, you know, the-
I think you'll see it's in the first part of the next page.
Oh, that this isn't it?
Right.
That this statement isn't it. This is just a cover sheet. Okay. It's not the ordinance, even though it has a number beside it.
It is literally a cover sheet.
It is literally the cover sheet.
About a half inch of document.
Right, but still it doesn't, oh, I see what you're saying. So there is no preface to it. This whole thing becomes the numbered on. Okay.
So these pages are taken.
Further discussion, Spear?
Thank you. When, there's obviously a lot, a lot of pages here, and as we talked about when this was introduced, most of this code adoption is technical in nature and has been vetted by many organizations. What I'm interested in are the adaptations that were Portsmouth-specific. And I was thumbing through this, and I could see sometimes we'd mention the historic district commission, for example. I know that's us. How do I know? Is there an easy way that the office could provide kind of pointers to where it would be interesting for just, that we really have to focus on?
Perhaps not a plumber or electrician. I'll just, I see Rick Hopley out there. Why don't we ask Rick to come forward and see if there's a way to highlight the report so that when it's presented at the second reading, people be aware of the Portsmouth-specific items? Rick Hopley?
Good evening, Rick Hopley, Chief Building Inspector. As I understand your request, you're wondering if those sections that you have before you can be somehow annotated to address Portsmouth-specific items? I suppose we can. Some of them, many of them are on the books now. Is that something you want to know?
I guess the new ones we would be, we're, I need some help in figuring out what to focus on and try to change that we're adopting.
Well, before we get to Council Kennedy, perhaps we could just find a way to highlight the new Portsmouth-specific ones.
Sure.
It won't be in the ordinance book that way, but it will for the presentation.
Right.
Okay. Council Kennedy?
No, I was just going to give you a suggestion. Whenever we get something from the state, they put on what the federal part is and then what the state specific in italics-
Okay.
...or something like that, and then they usually highlight in yellow what is the newest form, so you know what the federal mandates are, the state, and so here we could probably do the state and city and highlight this.
We'll give it a shot. Further, Deputy City Manager?
I understand what the concerns are that you both raised. We'll take a look at that, but know that it is such a complex thing that we're adopting, it may not be as simple as the applications that you're talking about in other cases. But we'll find a way to highlight as best we can what the changes are, but I don't think you're going to see a marked-up copy that would, where you could go through line by line and compare what state, what's federal, what city, it would be far too complex.
It would be a challenge.
And I don't think you would gain a lot from it, but what I hear you saying is you want highlighted for you what the most significant changes are, what are the Portsmouth-specific things, and I think that-
We can work on that.
Have you ever seen Special Ed Law?
I'm sure it's more complex.
Okay. Further questions, Assistant Mayor Blaylock?
Well, just a comment on that, because I think sometimes we, you know, ask for things that may be helpful to one or two councilors, but we may, we don't want to waste valuable city resources on things that, for time-saving on our part necessarily, when the staff, and I'm not saying it's, I mean, if it's something that can be done quickly and simply, fine, but if it's something that's going to take hours and hours of valuable city resources, to me, it just doesn't make sense to have that reduced to that if that's the case. Maybe an attempt at it to see if it is too daunting, but, you know, to me, you know, whenever you waste time, you're wasting money, and that's something we certainly don't want to be doing unnecessarily.
Rick, do you care to comment?
Well, we certainly can take a stab at it and see what we come up with. There are certain definite Portsmouth-specific items that we can highlight, and others are more nationally generic, so we'll give it a shot.
Do you expect that that's an exhaustive bit of work for the Portsmouth-specific, or do you think it's reasonable?
No, I think I can probably do it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks to all. Further discussion. Seeing no one rise for discussion, ready to call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Item D, resolution authorizing the borrowing through the State Revolving Fund Loan Program American Recovery and Reinvestment Act for costs related to two water system improvements, not to exceed $55,000. The motion would be to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and adoption of the resolution as submitted on the October 5, 2009 city council meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no one inquire, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. There is nothing on the consent agenda this evening. We move to presentation of consideration of written communications and petitions. The first is a petition for municipal storm drain on Custom House Court. Do we have a motion? Motion would be to perhaps accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any other comment on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Next, item B, a letter from Paula Blank, requesting permission to set up a missing man table in honor of POW MIA Recognition Day on Saturday, September 19, 2009, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 at 22 Pleasant Street. And the motion that has been suggested and that we can discuss is that this be located at the Von Mall. And the reason, I'm going to just ask the deputy city manager to briefly speak to why that's a recommended action.
Sure. As you probably know, if you looked at your events listening, I've been reading the press, there's a lot going on on September 19th on Saturday. We have the Ferry House Tour, we have the breast cancer race, and we have the Fish and Lobster Festival. The letter requests that this missing man table, which is a great idea, but location is of concern, the letter requests 21 Pleasant Street. We're not sure where that address is.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two Pleasant Street. It's likely somewhere between Porter and State Street, but we haven't been able to find that location, so I'm not sure of what they have in mind. But given everything that's going on in town on that Saturday, particularly near this location, we felt that moving to Von Mall would be the best location.
Okay, so we have the explanation. Did anyone make the motion? I can't recall.
Can we make a motion to refer that to the city manager with power and have him get in touch with Ms. DeLaBanc?
I think that's a reasonable motion. Do we have-
I'll second that.
Second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Item C, this is the request of Poco Diablo Inc. regarding the unmet parking need fee. Just a moment. And at this time, I'm going to seek to pass the gavel down the line.
I will not be also, for conflict of interest purposes, not be sitting on this particular-
Okay, so I'll state my piece, but then have the assistant mayor state his, and then we'll pass it along to Nancy Novaleen Clayberg. I've been advised that while there is no potential conflict of the pecuniary interest rule of the city council, I may have a conflict under the rules of professional conduct for attorneys, as my wife was, to my knowledge, not involved in this representation, does work for the law firm that is involved arguably in this, and for that reason, I will not participate in deliberation or discussion. And with that, I will pass it on to Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
And for, to eliminate potential conflict of interest, I own the old Ferry Landing Restaurant, which is the abutting property, which may or may not benefit or will be affected somewhat by this project, so I will pass the gavel to Nancy Novaleen Clayberg.
Do we have a motion to recommend that the location for this request, oh, I'm sorry, that we move the, authorize the city manager to transfer $22,220 from the benefit payments made by Poco Diablo to the unmet parking need fund?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Council Smith?
I had asked the deputy city manager earlier to come up with the numbers of how much was paid into that fund, and if I can have that report now, I appreciate it.
Sure. Just for the benefit of those listening, Poco Diablo has had a lease agreement with the city since the mid-1990s. Under that lease agreement, benefit payments were made to the city and lease payments were made to the city. Two different categories of funds that came in. Over the course of that time, a total of $336,342 was paid in through the lease. Of that amount, $133,700 was benefit payment, and the balance, or $202,640, was lease payment. And these two different revenues were differentiated in that the benefit payment basically said if and when a Riverwalk gets built, that the benefit payment portion would, could be applied towards that itself.
Any other questions? Council Dwyer?
Not a question, but just, I will support the transfer of the funds as the motion suggests. I think, even though, as you all know, we're proposing changes longer term in the zoning related to parking and parking credits, this is what we have on the books right now, and I think the transfer preserves in a fair way and is consistent with how we've treated parking need in other cases, so I think it's an appropriate thing to do.
Any other councilors? Shall we vote on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Novaleen Clayberg. We'll next move on to Item D, a letter from Trevor Bartlett, PHP Committee, requesting permission to hold the annual Portsmouth Halloween Parade on Saturday, October 31 at 6:00 PM. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've moved, and we're going to, just for the record, typically with parades, we move that to the city manager with power, if that's acceptable for the maker.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And, let's see. We now move on to the city manager's portion of the agenda. Deputy City Manager Cindy Hayden?
Thank you very much, Mayor. First item is a policy for hanging private flags projecting over city property. As you know, you have a letter from Samantha Finnegan and Whitney Swaffield, co-owners of Gus and Ruby's, Gus and Ruby Letterpress. They have requested permission to place an open flag over the sidewalk at 206 Market Street. As you know, we have, city council has licensed flags on both Deer and State Street, and also a significant number of A-frame signs and projecting signs over the course of time. What the city manager and I would like to recommend at this time is that this matter be referred to the Economic Development Commission for a report back to the city council, and the reason being that while this is just one flag being requested, I think the council is very well aware of, once you grant something to one, then you have a hard time with precedent not saying no to the next. And the intent is for the Economic Development Commission to weigh in as to how this might help or hurt the vitality of downtown if we have a proliferation of flags, open flags projecting over the city sidewalk. And the Economic Development Commission, you know, they could look at criteria for issuing flag licenses, for example, in the same way that the Deer Street was or State Street, there may be some downtown flag plan. So the recommendation is for the EDC to weigh in on this with a report back to you, and in the meantime, to have a moratorium on issuing open flags over city sidewalks.
Do we have a motion to refer and for a moratorium, a motion to refer to the EDC in a moratorium?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in, oh, Council Smith?
Nope.
He's scratching. This isn't an auction, he wasn't bidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Next, we move on to Item 2, and actually, if the deputy city manager could briefly incaption it, and then I'll have to speak as will Assistant Mayor.
All right, we have combined under one item here, multiple issues relative to the Bow and Seri Street waterfront. As you know, for some time now, the city has been working with private property owners and business owners down there to try and create a public park on the little city-owned parcel, and we're doing that in conjunction with the abutting property owners for some improvements on their property as part of a public-private partnership. So I will describe for you a variety of license agreements, utility easements, loan agreements, et cetera, that we need this evening.
And before she does that, I will say again for the record that I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion debate and voting on these items. I've been advised by the city attorney that while there is no conflict of the pecuniary interest rule of the city council, as an attorney, there may be a conflict for me with regard to the rules of professional conduct, and even though it may only be arguable, my wife is employed by one of the firms engaged in the representation, and because, although is not my understanding she's involved in the work, I intend to recuse myself to avoid any appearance of impropriety, and I'll pass the gavel down to Assistant Mayor Blaylock and let him speak his piece.
Yeah, I'll also be stepping down. I have a direct interest in several of these agreements. As the principal in Blaylock Family LLC and the president of Old Ferry Landing Incorporated, both of which are involved in the agreements, I directly am financially connected to this, so I will pass the gavel to Councilor Novaleen Clayberg.
I guess we'll take these separately. There are five different easements, variances that need to be voted on. The first one is the move to authorize the city manager to take the following actions to facilitate the Bow-Seri Street waterfront improvement project. And the first is to acquire the temporary passageway construction access agreements as outlined in the city manager's comments.
And if you'd like, Counselor, I could give a brief overview of that.
Okay. Should we get the motion approved first?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
All right, the first item is, as you know, on the city-owned parcel, we will be making improvements with benches and lighting and resurfacing of that area with teco block pavers, drainage improvements, et cetera, basically creating a public park down there. As you move down the passageway, sometimes called the alleyway, behind the Bow Street Buildings, between the back of the Bow Street Buildings and the river, that area, which is currently a combination of surfacing materials right now, is all privately owned by four different private property owners. They would like to take advantage of what the city's doing out there. We have a bid item for teco block pavers that we're going to be putting on the city parcel, and each of the four property owners are in agreement to improve their own properties in the same fashion, so that we'll have a consistent paver down there. So for this item, all we need is basically a construction access agreement. The private property owners, since this is on private property, will be paying, each paying for this item, and we actually have already received those funds and are holding them in escrow. them in escrow, so we've had negotiations with each of the property owners, and they're in favor of this course of action.
Any comments or questions from councilors? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The second item is a move to authorize the city manager to take the following actions to facilitate the Bow Siri Street waterfront improvement project and to grant the utility easements as outlined in the city manager's comments. Do we have a person to make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Manager Cindy Hayden.
Again, it might be helpful for a little overview of this. Basically, there are private sewer and water lines down there and gas lines that benefit private parties and have to travel across the city-owned piece in order to get out to Siri Street where the city's main utilities are. What this does is put all those utilities in one, basically 10-foot-wide trench. Some of those are there now, some of them are getting moved over a little bit, some of them are new on the private property side, and what we want to do is, since we're improving that area, we don't want somebody to come in and dig it up, you know, next year. That's why the easement would be put in place. So, again, this is something that's been discussed at great length with the property owners. They're all in favor of this, which basically is just utility easements to all go in the same trench on city property, and the planning board has given you a favorable recommendation regarding this item.
Any questions or comments from councilors? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The third item is move to authorize the city manager to take the following actions to facilitate the Bow Siri Street waterfront improvement project. The third item is to approve the compactor loan agreements and associated promissory notes with the terms as outlined in the city manager's comments. Deputy City Manager?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Hayden?
Sure. This item, as you know, there's long been a trash compactor that's located on city property down on Siri Street, and we have, it's come before you, previously done a land swap with Portsmouth Navigation, basically to take a little corner of their property at no cost to the city to push back the compactor and its enclosure, so that it opens up the public park area, push it closer to the Portsmouth Navigation building. It will be right on the edge of city property and extending just a little bit out over what is currently city property. And we have, on this one, again, been in a lot of in-depth negotiations and discussions with the affected parties, Ferry Landing, Poco Diablo, River House Restaurant, and this requires two things. One, a loan agreement with these entities. This benefits the private parties that use the trash compactor. As part of the city bid, we did get a price for building a new trash compactor enclosure, which will have lighting and durable materials and drainage and ability to wash it down, keep it clean, and maintain it, and basically just be very durable over the years. The intent would be to have a loan agreement with each of these three parties, that they would pay back at 2% interest over a 10-year term, and it's basically divided evenly three ways between those three parties. The second to this is a license agreement. This area has been licensed in the past on a year-by-year basis, but because of the substantial investment they're making in the compactor enclosure, we'd look at a 10, we're proposing, and they have agreed to a 10-year license agreement with an additional five-year renewal period, and that's at a cost of $1. And basically, the license agreement, which is attached in your packet, just outlines best management practices. It allows the three parties to add additional restaurants in discussions with the city if others want to come on board afterwards. It addresses the issue of what if businesses change hands, et cetera. So the three parties, it's been a lot of negotiation between our legal department and their lawyers over the last month or so, and all parties seem to be in agreement on this. I'd like to just point out one thing on the license agreement, just housekeeping, that originally, we had to ask the compactor to be emptied twice a week between Memorial Day and Columbus Day. They've asked, after your packet was put together, to roll that back to Labor Day, so between Memorial Day and Labor Day, twice a week. And just a new item added at the very end, which basically says, instead of everybody having to sign the same agreement that we can, you know, basically sign, I'm struggling on this one, Suzanne.
You can just sign the whole agreement.
But basically, everyone can just sign the signatory part and meet the legal requirements, just the housekeeping things.
Council Pantalakis?
Is there any reason why, I know you've got two separate funds there, but I don't know which one, what the names of them are, but is there any reason why the fund, one of those funds cannot be used for that compactor?
Well, I think that gets to the question of public benefit, and I'd ask the city attorney to comment on that.
Well, the first answer to the question is, we're responding to a negotiated situation in which all the parties have agreed to do things the way we're proposing. But the second reason is that the money which was paid by Poco Diablo's over the years under its lease agreement become public monies once they're received by the city. The compactor, and the operation of the compactor in particular, is going to be done for the private benefit of the restaurants involved, and there is a prohibition against spending public money for a private benefit.
I know that, but what I'm saying is, there is another fund other than the lease, right?
There are lease funds and there are benefit funds, however, they're both public monies.
Okay. And is the city going to own this land, or are these people going to own this?
The city is going to own the land, and the city is going to own the enclosure for the compactor. The compactor itself will be owned by others. That'll be an arrangement that's made between the restaurants and the waste hauling companies.
Anyone else with a question or a comment? Council Smith?
Thank you. Since we didn't get a copy of the loan agreement, I have a couple questions for it. One, you said that it was done by city bid. Was the people involved enabled to have their bids, since they're the ones gonna have to be paying for this? In other words, so they can get a third party to kind of make sure the costs are in line?
We did make available to them, let me back up a little, we had a competitive bid for the entire project, the improvements on private property, the compactor enclosure, and everything that would happen on city property. We received competitive bids on that. For anything that was likely to be a, was gonna be a private pay item, like the Teco Block pavers in the alleyway, like the compactor enclosure, we had separate pricing on that, so we could pull that out and say, this is the real cost of this. And as we do with any bid, we had the engineers that developed the tech specs and the engineering plans for this, we had them review the bids that were submitted and tell us whether they thought they were good bids. We also, as soon as we got the bid for that particular item, shared that with the parties, and they had the opportunity to review that. And as I understand it, since they're all in agreement with where we have come to at this point, I'm sure they would rather it be lower, but they, as I understand, have reviewed it and felt that it will work for them.
Okay. The other one is, you said that there's provisions in there that other restaurants at a later time can be added to this agreement. Do they then reimburse the principal restaurants that have already paid into this?
I think I'd ask the Assistant City Attorney, who's been most involved in these negotiations, to answer that question specifically.
And while she's coming up, my other question is gonna be, why didn't we get a copy of the loan agreement? We usually get copies of this stuff.
I'd be glad to provide you with a copy, but in summary, the loan agreement itself is pretty bare bones. They have committed to, I should say, the city has actually committed to going forward with its contractor to construct the enclosure, provided that they agree to enter into promissory notes, which are, the cost of which, the low, the cost of the enclosure is split three ways equally. In the license itself, it is transferable to other restaurants, so for example, should the restaurants sell, it is transferable with our consent, which would not be unreasonably withheld, which is kind of a legal standard. In addition, we have made it clear, and the license does allow for them, the holders of the license, to come to the city and say, we have another participant, and we would again consent and not unreasonably withhold consent unless we had some concern perhaps for profit-making, which is why we want to make sure we're involved and know who's involved in that compactor license. We also want to know who's putting trash there for liability reasons, obviously.
If another restaurant was going to come into it, do they reimburse the original people that paid in to do the project?
We would expect that the holders of the current license would negotiate with whoever was interested in participating in the license, and then they would come forward to the city as a group and say, this is how we think it works out fairly, and we'd look at that and review that. It's hard to come up with a formula when you don't know who might actually come in and what their volume of trash or other usage might be, so we figured the best thing to do was to leave it a bit flexible.
How many restaurants are currently using the current dumpster?
I believe?
I believe there's five names on the current, well, there were five names on the license agreement, which is no longer in effect, but the last time it was in effect, I believe that there were five.
And the two that dropped out, what are they gonna be doing with their trash?
You'd have to speak to the owners.
Any other questions or comments?
If I can continue?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. The reasoning for my questioning on this is, my major concern with this is not so much the fact of how we're handling the trash in the city. My concern about it is the fact that we have other restaurants down there that are now gonna be starting to find other ways of handling their trash. I don't want to see trash barrels start filling up on the sidewalks. I don't want to see and start hearing people who live down there having to go through the process of having the dumpsters come through early in the morning, hearing the clanging of the bottles and the emptying of the trash cans into the dump trucks. And basically, those other two restaurants have been, because it's expensive, they've said they don't want to be part of it. I think if the city had gotten together and shared in these expenses to bring the cost of it down a little bit more, that these other restaurants would have participated in. There's gonna be an issue down there with trash, and we're the ones that are gonna have to now, later on, come up with a way of dealing with it. And I hold some strong reservations. I will vote in favor of this, but I hold very strong reservations on how this dumpster situation has been handled.
Council Dwyer?
This is really a clarification, and it's partly related to what we're actually doing. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that the city will own the enclosure, and therefore, we are licensing the compactor, and we are also licensing the use of the enclosure. Is that the accurate way to think?
We are licensing the use of the enclosure for them to arrange for the compactor.
Okay, we're not licensing the compactor?
No.
So the title of Siri Street Compactor License, that's what kind of threw me. We're really licensing the use of the enclosure?
That's correct.
Okay. That would be helpful to, because we're all gonna forget what this is, and just to clarify, that would be good.
Can I do a follow-up on that?
Yes.
For clarification?
Sure.
But if another restaurant wanted to use this compactor, they have to also get approval from the city?
That's correct.
Council Dwyer?
If another user wanted to use the enclosure, I mean, you know, like they wanted to put recyclables in the enclosure, they would also have to get the approval of the city. It's not just for use of the compactor.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions and comments? Council Pantalakis?
Yes. If anyone else comes into this deal, do the other three people that are in it now, starting and paying the full benefit, get any benefit from that?
The way this has been put together, if someone else, another restaurant, should wish to use the compactor within the enclosure, they would first go to the existing restaurants with whom the city has a license, and then they would work out their arrangement, which presumably would call for the new restaurant to be contributing to these costs, and then the arrangement would be brought forward to the City Council for approval.
Okay. Anyone else? Shall we move the motion?
If I might, you might just want to have the motion read back, because are you, just to be clear, are you voting on item C and D, because we just talked about C and D, or is the motion that's on the floor right now just C?
I believe it's just C.
So people are clear.
Okay. All in favor of C?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the next motion is move to authorize the city manager to take the following action to facilitate the Bow Siri Street waterfront improvement project, approve the compactor, license agreement attached to the city manager's comments.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The final one, a move to authorize the city manager to take the following actions to facilitate the Bow Siri Street waterfront improvement project, to approve the temporary construction license for Poco Diablo's new restaurant deck. So moved. Do we have a second? City Manager Hayden?
And this is probably the simplest one of all. Given the location of the new deck, really, in order to build his new deck, John Gollum needs to cross city property. This is just a very simple construction license agreement to allow him to do that, and please know that we have been, and we will continue to be working in very close cooperation with John as he builds his new deck, because we're gonna have a lot going on in that area all at the same time, so we want to facilitate his deck construction and be able to proceed with our project as well.
Questions, comments? Council Smith?
Thank you. I just want to take a brief moment, since this is the final step, as it were, is to get this park underway. I just want to say that, you know, I'm disappointed that the original intent 20 years ago to build the entire Riverwalk was lost, and now we have, we've kind of all come down to a little park. I'm thankful that everyone has worked together, got these agreements together, and finally worked everything out. I hold, obviously, reservations on how the trash removal's gonna be down there. But at the same time, I'm very concerned, and I'm hoping that the city will be made aware and be able to come up with a good policy for keeping that area clean. I'm concerned that this little park area is going to become nothing but a smoking area for the restaurants and bars that are down there. The restaurants and bars that are along the river's edge is what makes Portsmouth unique. It's another destination. It's another reason why people come to the city. And if we now have this park area become an area that people can park a motorcycle in, or a scooter, or put their bicycle, you know, attached to one of the benches, becomes, you know, littered with cigarette butts, it's gonna be an eyesore for the city. So I'm really hoping that while this is being developed, it's gonna be kept in mind on how those areas and how those issues are gonna be taken care of.
Any other comments? I would just like to say, in preparing for this part of the meeting today, I met with Attorney Sullivan and Deputy City Manager Hayden, and they talked a lot about how hard the city staff has worked on making this happen, and how, what a good rapport they had with the restaurant owners and the people that own the property there. So I think we can congratulate all of them for working together to make this happen, our city staff, and then the restaurant owners and people that are involved down there. So thank you all very much for making such a good effort to make this happen. I think we're finished. Would you like to come back, Mayor Farini?
We have to vote.
Oh, we didn't take that final vote?
No.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Another thing finished after 20 years.
Thank you. We now move on to informational items, if you have any. She does not.
Three.
Item three, sorry about that. Police Department to request to utilize propertyroom.com to dispose of property. So, do you care to speak to that briefly?
Just to briefly speak to that, as you know, there's a letter in your packet from Chief Furlan, basically saying that they would like to contract with this outside agency, basically to address an issue that they have now, where any property that does not know its rightful owner, either through being evidence collected or being a stolen object whose owner can't be found, is stored by the police in the evidence room, and it gets very crowded in the evidence room, and I guess there are about 200 bicycles there now. They have to auction those off per their current system, and this outside agency would now enable that to have no labor on behalf of the police department to get rid of those items, no more auction, and they would not have to store them on-site. So now, when the police are ready, if they have an item that they need to dispose of... So now, when the police are ready, if they have an item that they need to dispose of, this company immediately picks it up, they advertise it for bids prices similar to eBay, it is sold, and then no labor on behalf of the city and no storage on behalf of the city.
And given that, we've had an explanation, you have a letter in your packet, does anyone care to make a motion to authorize the police department to enter in an agreement with propertyroom.com?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close at your knees. Anything further from the deputy city manager?
Info items, would you like me to review them?
If you wish.
Info items. Lot going on, as was already mentioned, on the weekend of September 19th and 20th, so you have the event listing in your packet. On the 19th Saturday is the Ferry House Tour, the Fish and Lobster Festival, and the Breast Cancer Race Event. We're still working with the breast cancer folks. They're now going to begin and end at the middle school. That's a, kind of a late-breaking change, so that we can accommodate what's going on over in the Prescott Park area, so it won't be as crowded there. And we're still working with them, and going to be meeting with them tomorrow to finalize details. And then on Sunday following, on the 20th, we have the Criterion Bike Race, which you know from past experiences, quite involved. So a lot going on in that weekend of the 19th and 20th in town.
Thank you very much.
And then just the final info item is the Fall Household Hazardous Waste Day, will be September 26, 8:00 AM to noon at Public Works, and that's for Portsmouth, Greenland and Newington residents. And you can go to the DPW website for further details on what you can and can't bring.
Okay. Any further questions for the deputy city manager before I proceed? Okay, with that, I'll head to the mayor's portion of the agenda. We have a number of appointments to be voted. Ryan Baker, and, and I'm going to just read through them all. We can vote them all at once unless someone would like to sever them and do them separately. Does anyone care to make them separate votes? If not, I'll go forward. Ryan Baker, appointment to the Citywide Neighborhood Steering Committee. James Horigan, reappointment to Conservation Commission. George Melcher, reappointment to the Historic District Commission as an alternate. Calvin Couch, reappointment to the Housing Endowment Fund Advisory Board. Jeff McLean, appointment to the Portsmouth Economic Development Loan Program. Drew Martin, appointment to the Blue Ribbon Committee on Sustainable Practices, and Brett Passinella, appointment to the Blue Ribbon Committee on Sustainable Practices. All in favor of those appointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I need a motion. I need a motion.
Move to a point.
Second.
Second. Okay. Counselor Smith?
Just take one, and that's Brett, off, off it, so we can have a separate discussion.
We, we certainly can. So why don't we vote all but Brett Passinella? That's a, that's, we'll just offer that as courtesy of the chair. Is that any problem with the maker and the second? None? Okay, so all in favor of the previous slate, or the slate as indicated, less Mr. Passinella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I, I, just, I've questioned this before in his documentation. He says he's been a resident of the city for two months.
I am, I.
It was, it's the last one in your packet. And I know we've, we've, I know it's an unwritten rule that we've discussed in the past, that a, that a resident, they at least be a resident of the city for at least two years. It is an unwritten rule. I have nothing against this, the gentleman. It's just, it's something we have discussed in the past and have had an issue with it.
I understand, and I appreciate the comment. We need a motion to approve this individual before we have further discussion.
So moved.
We need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Just, I'll just echo my comments from, from previous. If, if there's no other objections, and the council wants to continue, I didn't get a chance to speak to this person. I know the, the mayor, of course, does a good job in interviewing people, but I just wanted to raise my concerns. Note it, note for the record, and I think I owe Counselor Smith an explanation in this instant case. It is typically not my practice to bring someone forward in that circumstance. However, given his experience in Dover, which was a close community, and given his credentials, I felt it was an opportunity to bring someone on and, but his, his, even though this may be an exception that proves the unwritten rule, it's a rule duly, duly remembered by me, and I'll, I'll certainly bear that in mind as we go forward. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And that is it for me. So we now go on to Counselor Kennedy and Letter of Support and Fishermen.
I think that you all remember back to when we started the Fishing Committee, we stated that one of the things that we were going to try to do was support them with either letters or input on regulation issues and concerns that they have and support, when they need some support. This is an issue that's been brought up. It's very complicated. I, I, this is this letter that Eric Anderson, the president of the commercial fishing industry, presented. What I would like to do is make a motion that we send this letter to the city manager and Pat Remick, who's our legislative liaison, and have them support with Eric Anderson. And I myself would be more than happy to participate in creating a letter that the city feels comfortable for and the council feels comfortable in sending in support of the fishermen to our legislative delegation.
I second that.
Seconded, so just the import of the motion is, we're going to have a recommendation for the city staff for a letter to come back to us for it to go from the council. Counselor Dwyer?
Just because I do know how complicated these things are, but I would appreciate, along with the letter, to actually have the amendment and a, a direct explanation of, of what it is that we would be supporting, because these things always cut two ways with environmental issues, and, you know, I don't have any trouble supporting whatever Pat and the city manager come up with, but I, I definitely, as we've done on some other things, want to make sure we have council input. We do have a legislative committee of the council, and maybe this is an appropriate one.
Perhaps we could, if, if this would be acceptable, Counsel Dwyer, without a motion, I, I see the deputy city manager taking notes. Perhaps in the first instance, we could get a copy of that which is being supported by the letter, so that they can have an opportunity to review and comment, and then either their report and/or a copy of that which is included for the law itself could be provided or a summary, so that the council is informed when it goes to vote. Is that acceptable? Counselor Kennedy?
I just want to add one last thing. The fishing community, the, I was not able to attend myself, and I think Counselor Spear was there, did a commendable job in meeting the legislation on Thursday, and I heard only but great things from not only the fishing community, but also legislative delegation today. So I commend them, and this is something we're going to try to do and bring it to people's attention, and we'll take it farther.
Thank you, Counsel Kennedy, Counsel Spear, then Counsel Pentelakis.
I just want to add on to that. One of the struggles that I've learned when I attended that meeting on last week, or Tuesday, whenever it was, I'm lost, was that New Hampshire has such a limited sea coast, although it's even on our seal, we have a strong maritime history. When a lot of these decisions are made in the New England scheme of things, sometimes we're overlooked at the federal level, and the interests of Maine and Massachusetts are well represented. And so, and I saw that demonstrated when I saw the fishermen meeting with their congressional and delegations. And I think the least we can do, and this will come out with, working with the city staff, is to have a strong statement of support for, at least at our level, the local level, to try to influence the federal decision-making.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Pentelakis, sorry.
Yes, I, I would like to see us kept behind this strongly. When the stimulus funds came out, Maine and Mass both received money. New Hampshire received none. I think we ought to also take into consideration that this of Portsmouth was built on fishermen, lobster fishermen and whatnot. And it's beginning to be a dying industry, and it's going all commercialized, and it's going to take away from the future when my grandchildren, or your grandchildren, or my great-grandchildren decide they might want to go lobster fishing or something. It's all going to be commercialized. There's not going to be any way that a young person can go out on a boat by himself and build lobster trap, uh, build lobster traps and drop them in the water. So I would hope that we would send a very strong message to them from the city council the way we feel.
Thank you.
If anyone feels like I do.
Thank you, Counsel Pentelakis. Counsel Dwyer?
I think that might be a different issue. I mean, that might be worth talking about, too, but that's why I think it's really important to know what you're advocating for, because
Right.
You can only be good advocates if we actually understand what it is, so.
Well, I think we've made a request for the supporting documentation to go along with that, so that we have a better sense, and we can inquire as needed. And with that, any further comment or discussion on this particular item?
Move the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thanks, Counselor Smith. The next question before us is miscellaneous or unfinished business, and if there is none of that, we are.
Just one, one brief one. I just want to make sure I get a, would like to get a copy of that agreement license that I had, the loan license.
The loan agreement?
Loan agreement.
We'll get that out to everybody.
Thank you.
On the council.
With that, we have, we have motion to adjourn by Counsel Noblyn Clayburg.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thanks, Counselor Smith. The next question before us is miscellaneous or unfinished business, and if there is none of that, we are.
Just one, one brief one.